Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for joining us tonight for our Durham County Board of Commissioners' regular session this July 28th. The board met in closed sessions. No action was taken, there actually was data to staff. And we'll get us started with the public charge. Before I do that, actually just a few housekeeping matters. We are in a different space today due to HVAC issues in our Admin One building. So thank you all so much for being flexible with us. But a huge, huge shout out to our Director of General Services, Mo, who's usually there. But her and her team have been honored to get that room, that space, that whole building repaired and back in service, but also set up this entire space for us to continue our meeting and make sure. Thank you to our Public Information Office for getting information out to the community that our space has changed with the landlord clerk's office. And as well to know, for instance, we're in new space. There is a bathroom through the back, through that direction. There's two bathrooms and then there's also two on this side. So in case you need to go to the rescue remedy point. And for folks who are watching online, you may see just an empty county commission chambers. That's just because our camera setup is different. But we are here in the Health and Human Services Building on the second floor and the meeting is being recorded to be published properly later. But thank you all for bearing with us. Now, the public charge. The Board of Commissioners asks its members and residents to conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous manner, both with the board and fellow residents. At any time, should any member of the board or any resident fail to observe this public charge, the Chair will ask the offending person to leave the meeting until that individual regains personal control. Should decorum fail to be restored, the Chair will recess the meeting until such time that a genuine commitment to the public charge is served. Commissioner Jacobs, would you like to read the line of the law?
As we convene for the Durham County Commissioners' meeting, it's crucial to recognize the painful truth of history. We stand on the stolen ancestral lands of the Gatovo, Ino, Okanitu, Shakori, and Tuscorora peoples, whose deep connection to this land predates our arrival. We acknowledge with humility the unjust displacement and violence that occurred, leading to the dispossession of indigenous peoples from their homelands. Their resilience in the face of such adversity is a testament to their strength and spirit. May we humbly honor the ancestors and elders of these nations, both past and present, by committing ourselves to fostering understanding, healing, and justice for all who inhabit this land. Let us walk forward together with open hearts, acknowledging the past, and embracing a future guided by compassion, respect, and unity.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. Vice Chair Dr. Lee, would you like to do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lee. Are there any agenda adjustments? Seeing none, I'll enter in a motion to approve the agenda.
Move. Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Mr. Ronan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is adopted, five to zero. For announcements, I'll be giving our clerk a break and reading them today. For the announcements, Go Triangle is offering 15-minute service beginning August 4th. Go Triangle will offer their first-ever 15-minute service along routes 404 and 405 in Durham and Orange Counties. This new change will affect old routes. Please visit www.gotriangle.org/service/ changes for more information. Stop the Violence and Ceasefire Community Resource Event. The Durham County Sheriff's Office is hosting its third annual Stop the Violence and Ceasefire Community Resource Event at the Durham County Memorial Stadium on Saturday, August 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This event is part of the Durham County Sheriff's Office's Project Safe Neighborhoods Initiative. Everyone is invited to come out for a day of fun while learning about community resources. There will be back-to-school giveaways, complimentary food from local food trucks, and entertainment for all ages. Durham County Library is having a Library Fest Logo Contest. Can you out-design Durham County Library staff? They are calling on all artists, hobbyists, and design daredevils to enter the Library Fest 2026 Logo Contest. This year's theme is "The Stories That Built Us." And your design could be the face of it all. Deadline to submit entries is August 15th, 2025. Find out more information at durhamcountylibrary.org/ arbitrary-featured/library- fest-2026- logo- design- contest. Durham County Tax Bill Estimator. Now that the 2025 general reappraisal and both the city and county of Durham have passed their 2025-2026 budgets, residents may be wondering what their tax bill will be. Watch the video, you can look it up on our Durham County YouTube page, I'm not reading that link, to learn how to use our tax bill estimator and then head to the estimator at fit.ly/deco-taxbillestimator. Apply for Economic Development Grant Program. The Durham Soil and Water Conservation District's Agricultural Economic Development Grant Program is accepting applications. Funded by the Durham Board of County Commissioners, the purpose of the AEDGP is to offer cost-share grants to assist farmers and nonprofits in their agricultural endeavors and to promote agricultural development and outdoor environmental learning centers in schools. Applications are open until 11:59 p.m. on August 25th, 2025. No, backslash ag, economic, development, grants. DECO website has a new look. Last week, the official Durham County government website got it over hold with the launch of our redesigned website. Be sure to head over to www.dconc.gov and check it out. We will be looking for feedback from residents and stakeholders on what they like and what we can improve in the near future. You can also send your feedback now to Public Information Office at dconc.gov. That concludes our listed announcements. Are there any other announcements from the board? Commissioner Burton?
Testing, Ken. Ken, you hear me?
Thank you.
I just want to say that two weeks ago, we attended NACO in Philadelphia, the NACO Conference, the National Association of Counties. It was a very enlightening, educational conference to learn about what's going on across the country with other counties. We talked about in a lot of the breakout sessions. I went to a session on transportation. And also, we had a very informative session around the bill or the one big beautiful act that's coming down from Congress and how counties can prepare for that. So I just wanted to say it was really great to be with my colleagues, Commissioner Valentine, Commissioner Lee, County Manager Hager. It was very, my first one, so I'm looking forward to going back to others. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. I was at the Durham Public School Foundation is currently doing their Build That Plus, Fuel the Eater campaign, where they are collecting contributions, book bags, school supplies from July 7th through August 8th. You can go to their pages through Crayons, Crayons to Calculators, CPS Foundation. If you look them up, you can either donate money or you can go to one of their drop-off sites to drop supplies off. They're also going to be having another school supply drive. There is an upcoming event, the Coco Drip, happening August 23rd. That is, it's a vendor market and serves as a, will be serving as a drop-off event site as well for school supplies. So if anyone wants to drop off book bags, pencils, crayons, notebooks, you can feel free to do so if you're there. And then as well, House Member Caba Nero, myself, Representative Mark Conroy, and Chair Bettina Umstead are hosting a town hall this Saturday at Durham County Public Main Library at 1:00 p.m. And it's going to be moderated by some of the amazing interns that are at our Kids Voting Durham Office that's based out of our corporate extension. So please come out, ask us your questions, learn about the different bodies of government here in Durham. Commissioner Jacobs?
I just have one quick comment slash announcement, asking residents to please tune in to our August 4th work session next week, where we will be having presentations and more in-depth discussion on the impacts to our residents due to the changes in law around Medicaid and SNAP benefits. There have been many changes that have been approved by Congress that are extremely concerning for how they will impact benefits, food, access to healthcare, and other types of benefits to people in our community. And I think it's important that our entire community is informed and so that we can also work together as best we can to try, try to do our best to make sure that everybody maintains access to these benefits and also that we work together to address the gaps that will result in our community. So I just wanted to highlight that coming up on our work session. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobs. That concludes our announcements. We now move on to our minutes. We have minutes for our June 23rd, 2025 regular session that we need to approve. Commissioner Jacobs?
I was not present at the meeting and I just noticed reviewing the minutes that there needs to be one correction related to the appointment for the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. It lists me as one of the votes. So it just, it obviously is just an, you know, editing mistake, but thank you. So I would suggest that any motion includes just correcting that one item. Thank you.
On approval of the minutes, to include Commissioner Jacobs. Just a minute.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Dr. Lee, second by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Some of them are, yes.
Love it.
We are approved. We'll now move to resident comments. First of all, let's wish you folks, oh, okay, you'll come up to this podium. We only have two individuals signed up, Donna Steinbach and Betty Hamilton. You'll each have three minutes at the podium where clear passes.
Good evening, Board of County Commissioners. My name is Donna Steinbach. My family lives in the Falls Lake Critical Watershed and I have assisted over 30 neighbors and Ken folks doing their Durham property tax appeals. I have indirect input from others assisting more than 60-plus taxpayers and over 145 different parcels. They have appealed and gone to the Board of Equalization and Review, or the Board. We, we'd like to thank the tax appraisers for their help that they could help on the buildings, but our major concern issue is the land rates in the Critical Watershed and the accessible data for what was used to come up with those land rates and the, what they call comparables. We have provided comparables or these are where you look at recent sales that are similar and, and look at the price per acre. We have developed our own list and sent it in and sent it in with a lot of these people that were doing their appeals. Unfortunately, their appeals regarding land do not get done, and mine did not get done, at the initial appeal. It, I have to go to the, an appealed act and go to the Board of Equalization to have them look at the land rates. And I had raised many issues and presented about the land rates and had meetings with people about the land rates. And I still, on July 16th, I get it back and they didn't change. They did not look, you know, because I asked the appraiser about the land rates and he said, "We just did the buildings." So this makes it very difficult for other people because they get, they don't get to see what is being used and they don't get it until the last minute. And then at some of the meetings, comparables that we've had have been disregarded because they're too low. Now, you know, what data do you use if you're throwing it out because it's too low? And so the people that don't get any assistance from the Board of Equalization and Review on their land rates would have to appeal to the state. Now, I've got courage to appeal to the state, but a good bit of our community does not. And we had to, you know, encourage them to come out and let us help if they were frustrated over the rates because they have given up and just said, "It's not going to change." You know, "There's nothing we can do to change it." Well, y'all, no, I don't believe that. So, thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
I am Betty Hamilton. I live in Roldell County on Patterson Road. I actually live in an area where I have lots of family members right around me and my major concern is with dealing with this tax assessment and the amounts we've been given, I see no consistency. I look at the amount that's given for one vacant lot, which is part of my property, as compared to my brother's who is less than a mile away from me and there's no way I can determine how these amounts are calculated or what you're using to figure out these rates and how we can address them. I understand there are problems with the Critical Watershed that have not yet been resolved. I have family members who already have hearings scheduled and I wonder how they can have hearings if this Critical Watershed issue has not been resolved. It's significantly affecting people of my family. I don't know if I said it yet, but at least 15 parcels in my area in less than a mile and they're all appealing. And we want to get some consistency, understand how you're coming to these rates, and be able to explain to other members of the family how to get to it. I had a difficult time with the appeal process, just to let you know. I could not get my comparables submitted with my house. My cousin had a problem with the appeals process on the website. She didn't click to appeal. She was in the process of doing things and then marked appeal. So there are also some issues with the website. I understand too that the Northern County, where I have other cousins, have a different land rate, such as in Rouge Mott. It's 50,000 per acre for a building lot as compared to Redwood, where I live, 125,000 per acre for a building lot. And I would wonder why we have this inconsistency across the county. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all our residents to sign off. If our tax administrator, Kiara, if you want to provide any information, probably?
Good evening, Kiara Doyle, Tax Administrator. I have been in communications with these groups, speaking specifically to the concerns that were just raised. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. They have, they have definitely addressed their concerns. We have had staff work with them to try to see if we could get to some actual data. They showed us some actual values that could be based on some types of adjustments. We have not found any adjustment value, but we do believe what their concerns have, what they have described. We have, we've had numerous conversations. Staff is still working with them. However, I think they described that they got beyond our staff to the Board of Equalization and Review in some of these cases. And the Board of Equalization and Review decided that they could see values that address adjustments. What they are describing are real things. So this is not a matter of them not describing something that is real. But there is actually the data supporting the values that are in place. Speaking to land rates differing across the county, that is a normal occurrence. Values differ in regards to the land values across the entire county. There are very few neighborhoods that are exactly the same and the data is what gives us that information. But we will continue to work. If you please continue to communicate with staff. They have been very, very, very proactive and positive. So communications are positive and we'll continue to work with them.
Mr. Doyle?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any information about the website, concern that was raised about the website? Do you know anything about that? Concern that was raised about the website?
Yes, I do not, but definitely let us know more about that incident and we'll look into it. Definitely. Thank you. More questions?
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Thank you so much to our residents for coming and bringing these concerns to us. We now have some ceremonial items. First, the board is issuing a proclamation for National Emergency Management Awareness Month. And we have Dr. Lofter, who is here. Is it just you, or are there other cousins? How the folks do you?
Well, I chose to exercise director's prerogative because they will not say the nice things that they are deserving of this evening. They're margin-humble.
But would you like them to join you?
If they want to stand up as we talk about this. As you all know, the Office of Emergency Services, Emergency Management is one piece of what our office does. So they're led by Elizabeth Schrader. The deputy chief is Nate Sanders, Janiza Johnson, Hayden Smith, and Thomas Veralt. And these five folks comprise the city and county emergency management functions. It's a joint function between the two entities. They have labored for the last three weeks, oftentimes around the clock, mitigating the effects of tropical presence in Chantal. On top of that, they responded to hazardous materials incidents and as recently as yesterday, pulled off a very successful full-scale exercise involving activist assailants at both Duke University and North Carolina Central University. I was there for the exercise yesterday and it was an exceptional coordinated exercise with a number of agencies, both within the county and external to the county as well. These folks spend their lives dedicated to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. And I can tell you, in my 40-plus years in emergency services, these are some of the finest folks that I have ever had the pleasure of working with. So we are very grateful for the board recognizing National Emergency Management for Workness Month and the exceptional work that these folks do, day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to echo my appreciation, which the other board members want to as well. Just appreciation to y'all, especially now, we notice a lot of the work y'all do when there's emergencies, but we tend to forget what's, the work that y'all have to do behind the scenes when there isn't an emergency like tropical storm Chantal. The work that y'all put into place to make sure that we're ready to respond and prepared when there are natural disasters or emergency situations. So thank you so much for all of the time and effort y'all put into making us prepared, to keeping us safe, and when there are disasters, to responding to make sure our community members are safe as soon as possible. We had residents up in Northern Durham who were displaced and y'all were very quick to get out there, to assess and help find shelter for residents, not only for Durham County residents, but I know Orange County. I spoke to several town council members in Carboro that had to seek out services from Durham County Emergency Services. So y'all really stepped up to help our neighbors as well. So just really appreciate all of the work you do when the limelight is on you, but also when it's not there. Thank you. Vice Chair Dr. Lee?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that Commissioner Burton mentioned that we went to NACO and there's a lot of different sessions and tracks that you can go on. My focus was emergency management. It was, went to the sessions, crisis management, disaster recovery for counties, those sorts of things. And those sort of things, I'm really, really interested in making sure that Durham is prepared for some hearing and some standards resolution. Continuing to see the successes that you all have make me really proud and happy. But that is something I'm very interested in and I wanted to learn more about it and, and help advocate from this diet for those things. So I'm really excited about, so really excited about this. I'm excited about working with you all. So thank you for everything that you do.
Next ceremonial item is a proclamation for Program Integrity Awareness Month and we have Director Maggie Plapp from DSS, as well as Kelly Inman, our Chief Operations Officer, and Sheila Dorset.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much. We're here tonight to recognize our Program Integrity Unit and also our supervisor of that unit, who's been with the state for over 30 years and is retiring July 31st, which is Thursday, after 14 years with Durham. So we do want to recognize that as well while we do this. But I just want to say, when we talk about program integrity, right now, there's a lot of talk in the federal government about fraud and waste. Majority of that is with providers. We had a 94% rate of success across, across the United States last year for the federal government. So the majority of that is providers, not staff and not clients that receive these critical benefits. But this is our department at Durham DSS that helps ensure that we are making sure that people get the correct benefits and the proper payment. So I will turn it over to Kelly and Sheila, who's in charge of this department.
So our Program Integrity Unit is focused on preventing fraud, waste, and abuse in assistance programs to ensure that Durham residents who are eligible for benefits can get them timely and accurately. This small but mighty unit collected and returned $1.6 million to federal and state budgets this fiscal year, ending June 30th. Durham County was able to retain a little over $392,000 of those funds by completing 1,294 investigations and establishing 573 claims. This work maintains compliance and ensures that we are good stewards of public funds. So thank you for highlighting the work this month. I should also add that the PI unit has collected over a million dollars for the three years prior to the pandemic and the two years post-pandemic. And as Maggie mentioned, we do want to spend some time celebrating the amazing contributions of Sheila Dorsett, our Program Integrity Unit Supervisor. So before I came to Durham, I only knew Sheila by her name and reputation. And the best way that I can explain it is she's like the rock star of program integrity across the whole state. So people really regard her like a Beyonce or a Madonna in this world. You have to know this. So she would, everyone would always be excited if Sheila was going to be in a meeting and especially happy if she was training at that meeting. So as Maggie mentioned, Sheila has been with us for fourteen years and in service at the state of North Carolina for over thirty. She's a dedicated leader in the field of program integrity at the state and national level. She has represented us as a two-term past president of the United Council on Welfare Fraud. And having her time and talents in Durham has been quite the feather in her cap. Sheila's commitment to this important work has safeguarded vital resources for countless families across the state. So thank you, Sheila, for your leadership in Durham County and across the state and nation. Thank you for sharing your commitment to excellence and for making such a lasting impact on this important work. Happy retirement.
I had no idea that my retirement was going to come up at this meeting. Or I may have stayed at home. You've mentioned the big, beautiful bill, and it's something that all of us are trying to understand exactly what's going to take place. But it just makes me realize that with the limits that the federal government is putting into the Medicaid and the SNAP benefits, or what we used to call food stamps, it makes getting cases correct that much more important, that we are not giving too much to one person, that we don't have providers who are charging too much for their benefits and such as that. But I've been very proud to represent Durham County on the national and state and local level. And I plan to continue to represent Durham County and North Carolina in the National United Council on Welfare Fraud. I will remain on the board as long as I can. And at our meeting coming up next month, I'm scheduled to do two trainings. So I just feel that that's something good for all of the citizens of the USA. Thank you for recognizing program integrity this month. I appreciate you all.
Thank you so much to our DSS team. And congratulations to Dorsett for such an amazing career. And thank you for all of your service to Durham County and our residents. Mr. Jacobs, and then Commissioner Burton.
Well, I especially wanted to congratulate Sheila and thank you for your service to Durham County DSS and to other DSS agencies across the state and our country. I've had the pleasure of working with you while I was on the DSS board for twelve years. And you are the consummate professional, which I think everyone can see here, and also your passion for the work. And training is so important, integrity is so important. And when we heard federal officials talk about the waste, abuse, and fraud, and I knew it was all a bait and switch, and it wasn't true because I have seen up close the work that the integrity department staff do in Durham County. And I knew that that was not true. So thank you, wish you a wonderful retirement, and I'm also grateful that you're going to continue to be our service. Thank you.
Yes, I just want to echo those words from my colleague, Commissioner Jacobs. Ms. Dorsett, congratulations on your retirement. You're going to enjoy it, it's going to be grand. But I also want to say thank you for the work that you have done to make sure that individuals are getting the right benefits. And I just want to echo what Director Maggie Clapp said about most of the fraud, waste, and he's not even like saying that because like Commissioner Jacobs said, it's just like a front to get people distracted. We know it comes mostly from providers. They talked about that, it's interesting, they talked about that on NPR. And so getting it out there that it's not individuals who are trying to game the system, right? It's mostly from providers. So thank you for the hard work that you have done. And I hope there's someone to replace you because it's really critical work to make sure that people are getting the right benefits, especially what we know is coming down the pipe. So thank you.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I hope you don't find, I hope that you don't find me out of line. But thirty years of service to Durham County. And so I'm going to ask that everyone stay with me and applaud Ms. Dorsett for her years of service to Durham County. Ms. Dorsett, I just thought it would be fitting to let you know how much we appreciate you and how much residents here in Durham County appreciate your hard work over these number of years. Sounds like it's been a labor of love. So thank you again.
Thank you. We have our next confirmation is, I'm going to pass it back to you, Commissioner Valentine, actually, for the next one, the next resolution.
Yes, so thank you again, Madam Chair. And so I am, or have the honor and the privilege to offer a resolution on behalf of William Martin Bill Chamberlain, recognition of his life and his legacy. So whereas William Martin Bill Chamberlain pioneered University of North Carolina Chapel Hill basketball, died at the age of seventy-five on July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas Chamberlain, longtime resident of Durham, North Carolina, was the second black varsity basketball player who joined the University of North Carolina Tar Heels in nineteen sixty-nine. And whereas, as a standout player contributing significantly to the Tar Heel's success, he led the University of North Carolina to the Atlantic Coast Conference Tournament in nineteen seventy-one, doing the same the next year, also advancing to the Final Four in nineteen seventy-two. And whereas Chamberlain paved the way for future University of North Carolina basketball legends such as Bob McAdoo, who was present in Durham County today for his memorial, James Worthy, Michael Jordan, Vince Carter, and others. And whereas, during the three seasons, Chamberlain was a star player for the University of North Carolina, who received Most Valuable Player honors for his play at the NIT before receiving Second Team All-American accolades during his last year at the University of North Carolina. And whereas, off the court and in the classroom, Chamberlain was a standout student, as well as a civil rights activist who notably supported the improvement of working conditions, wages and benefits for black employees following the cafeteria worker strike in nineteen sixty-nine. And whereas, after his trailblazing basketball career at the University of North Carolina, he began his professional basketball career with the Kentucky Colonels and the Memphis Tams of the American Basketball Association, as well as with the Phoenix Suns in the National Basketball Association. He briefly played in France and later returned to the United States, where he became assistant coach at Duquesne University, located in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen seventy-nine. Chamberlain held other coaching, teaching, and state government positions until his retirement. Whereas, we respectfully honor the life and legacy of William Martin Bill Chamberlain and celebrate his impactful life of service to others, now therefore being resolved that the Durham Board of County Commissioners is all to pay tribute to my friend, William Martin Bill Chamberlain. We call upon all citizens of Durham County to remember his numerous contributions to athletic excellence, public service, and all the ways he made positive contributions to improve the lives of others this twenty-eighth day of July, two thousand and twenty-five. Signed, Madam Chair, Dr. Mike Lee, vice chair, Michelle Burton, Commissioner, Wendy Jacobs, Commissioner, and Stephen Ballackon, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Valentine, for this recognition, as well as attending the memorial services on behalf of the board. We appreciate you. We have, oh, we're sorry, memorial items. With the introduction of our twenty-twenty-five Durham County 4-H Youth Delegate, Promise McCoy. And we have Ms. Carolyn Kruger from the Quap River Station. Here, introduce her.
Hi, thank you. I am really pleased to be able to present to you Promise McCoy, who will be Durham's 4-H representative at this year's Youth Voice at the NC Association of County Commissioners meeting in this office. Promise is one of our most active 4-H youth leaders, not just here at the local level, but at the state level, where she's recently been elected as a state officer. And she's also a very valued youth leader at Kids Voting Durham. So she was our natural choice to represent us, represent Durham at this year's meeting. I know some of you are new, have not been to Youth Voice at the annual meeting of the NC Association of County Commissioners. But it is a great opportunity for our young representative to participate in simulations of county commissioners' meetings and learn a lot about what county government does. But the most impactful part is the Saturday afternoon luncheon, where you are all invited to come have lunch with Promise and to share with people what you all do, how county government impacts us in Durham, and make what she's learned in the previous day the real for her. So I'm going to let Promise tell you a little bit more about her. And then, as required by the Youth Voice program, we're going to take a picture with Promise and all of you for the program. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Promise McCoy.
Can you hold it real up close? Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay. My name is Promise McCoy, I'm sixteen years old, and I am the district secretary for 4-H. I'm deeply involved in my county's 4-H program and civic engagement through Kids Voting Durham. I'm attending Youth Voice because I want to bring youth perspectives directly to our leaders. Young people have strong opinions and hopes for the future, whether it's about mental health awareness, protecting our environment, or creating better opportunities in education. I've been working to live a more sustainable, live more sustainably, and I'm taking steps to get involved with the Sunrise Movement to help push for real climate solutions led by our generation. I want to learn firsthand how county decisions are made so that I can better understand how to make changes happen where I live. The workshops at Youth Voice, like Real Colors and the Budget Simulation, will give me a deeper understanding of leadership, collaboration, and how resources are prioritized in the community. Most importantly, I hope to serve as a bridge between generations. Youth Voice will give me the tools and experience to bring back fresh ideas and help create a more inclusive, responsive, and future-focused community where young people are not just seen, but heard and equipped. I'm looking forward to seeing you during the Saturday Youth Commissioner Lunch at the NC ACC Conference on August twenty-third. And I'm excited about representing you at Youth Voice. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you again, Promise, for representing Durham County and for all of your service through the 4-H program, but all the other ways through Sunrise, Kids Voting Durham, which you mentioned. And I'm sure that's just the iceberg of your involvement in our community. And I look forward to the day that you are sitting in our office. Sure. Our next, I'll pass it to Manager Hager to recognize the amazing achievements of our Durham County staff.
Fantastic. And I would also, before I get to that item, like to congratulate Promise as well. I was a 4-Her, so when you started talking about your highlights, I was a district 4-H president, this one, thanks too. And so my heart is always leaped for joy when I hear those successes, especially in 4-H. So keep up the great work. I will acknowledge eleven NACO Achievement Awards and a Digital Cities Award for twenty twenty-five. We have a lot of exciting activities happening in the county. The board will recognize these winners for seven NACO awards for twenty twenty-five. And they're, through a non-competitive application process, the programs receive awards in eighteen categories that they can cover. And these awards were given to the different recipients at the conference in Philadelphia, July eleventh to the fourteenth. And I will now share the different categories in which we were awarded. The first one was Durham County Government Public Facing Website Modernization, the Durham County Information Services and Technology and Public Information Office. And if y'all could come up and so we can recognize you. Fantastic. Okay, the next category is for DECO Ford, twenty twenty-nine, the Durham County Managers' Office. If you please come up. And so the next is our Durham County DECO Vote Application, the Durham County Information Services and Technology, and the Durham County Board of Elections. The next item is the Durham County Duke Fiber Implementation. This is Durham County Information Services and Technology. And the Durham County Social Services Case Management Modernization, the Durham County Public Facing Website Modernization, and Durham County Social Services. Fantastic. And the last one is the African-American Legacy in Gardening and Horticulture Symposium. That's with the Durham County Library. Let's give all of these recipients. Okay, there's one last one for the Durham County Information Services and the Technology Department and the Digital Counties Survey winner for twenty twenty-five. This competitive category was in This competitive category was in counties of populations of two hundred and fifty to four hundred and ninety-nine thousand individuals. And so, again, proud of our IS and T department and the information submitted, which shows that we are definitely trying to be progressive and forward-thinking. And it's all because of our exciting teams across the county working together. So thank you again, Gray. I would like to thank the staff that took the time to elevate the work that we're doing here and all of the camaraderie amongst the organization. Because although it may take one department submitting it, they're working with all of our departments and colleagues to make these things happen. So thank you for your commitment, your excellence, in helping our residents have great service. Again, thank you.
I want to echo, thank you, and congratulations to all of our Durham County staff. Truly, none of what we as commissioners vote on and do would be possible without our amazing Durham County staff. Y'all put in the real hard work hours, data collection, analysis that we then get to pay credit for. So thank you. And to put it into perspective of, you know, receiving so many awards for Durham County, there's a hundred counties in North Carolina, and there's, I googled it, there's three thousand one hundred forty-four counties in the country. So for Durham County to receive this many, eleven awards nationally, is really a huge feat. And it just goes to show how amazing of a team we have here under the leadership of Manager Hager. But really, it's also a grassroots organization where, you know, our staff filled us up all the way to the top. Thank you. That's our final ceremonial item. We now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items anyone would like to wish to write?
Yes, I don't, I just have a question about one. It's item number twenty-five dash zero four one one, the allocation for Little River Evergreen Two Schools Roof Replacement. We're getting a refund. The first thing I want to say, just for the audience, one of the questions that I often get is, where does all the lottery money go? Because many people don't understand, well, we get a lot of it for our schools to do capital projects, so that's the lottery money at work. But the question I had is, with the refund that's coming back, is there a fund that the school system has when lottery money is not spent? Do they keep the money, or does it go to the county? Where do those funds go?
Those funds would be returned back to the schools.
And the question I have, they must use it for capital, correct?
Yes, that's correct. They must use it for capital. And what will happen throughout the year, you may see budget amendments where they realign the dollars from one project to another, either because the project has completed or a scope has changed. And just like with the county, there are timelines that they try to work against, and they maximize those dollars to make sure they're following the guidelines of the state and optimizing for those dollars should be used.
Thank you. Commissioner Valentine?
Yes, I just have a question about twenty-five.
Do you have to hold it close?
Yes, so, so twenty-five zero four one four. Are we aware of any additional delays outside of the twenty weeks due time that's been identified before we actually have a covered solution to the issues of the chilis? This is a general question.
Well, at least it's almost standard for chiller replacements and chiller parts.
So.
The mic over there, the mic is on here. So it's a standard, standard of twenty to thirty-two weeks for chiller parts as well as for replacing the chilis.
So no additional delays? Would I anticipate additional delays?
No, we're praying for no additional delays.
Commissioner Jacobs?
I just have two quick comments and then a question. One is related to item twenty-five dash four zero, I'm sorry, zero four zero four, about our contract with Megan Durham. Just for the public, really excited about the U-Plan Academy at Southern High School. That's part of what we're approving tonight is a scope of work with Megan Durham that includes a special academy, biotech academy, that is going to happen at Southern High School. So that's really exciting. And I want to give a shout-out, item twenty-five dash zero four zero five. We have two conservation easements, and I'd really like to lift up the Frank and the Sparrow families in Durham County. These are two families that have been real leaders as farmers in our community. And it's thanks to their generosity and their leadership for moving forward with these land conservation easements. And related to what we saw with Chantel, we know that one of the things that we need to keep investing in to be sustainable with flooding is protecting our watershed. And that's what both of, especially, I think, the Sparer property is along the Falls Lake watershed. And that is going to help in the future with things like flooding. So I just want to lift them up. And my question is just, there are several contracts related to cleaning, which is not sexy, but it is really important. Really impacts our staff and people in the community, especially high-impact buildings like this one. And I was just wondering, I know that it says that there's up for a possible four-year renewal. If we could just hear a little more about the process for how the contracts will be evaluated on a yearly basis? And will the staff in the buildings get to have some input on, or feedback in letting you and your staff know what is working, what isn't?
So we monitor the buildings weekly with regards to the janitorial services that are being rendered. And we also have a committee that's representative of major building, what we call the building owners, general services. So we have representatives from the libraries, for example, who work with Sandra very closely with regards to the janitorial services being conducted in those buildings. And we ask for representatives from other buildings, like the SS and Public Health. And we have representatives for each one of the buildings. We also have, now have, General Services has an environmental assistant director, and he actually physically goes and monitors the activities of the janitors. And we have made a transition with regards to our janitorial services. So this will be the first year that General Services will actually be providing the products that go into several of our buildings. We're testing this out with regards to bringing in savings for the janitorial services and also trying to pick up the caliber of service that the janitors are actually performing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Those questions, I just want to highlight for item twenty-five dash zero three six nine, there is, we're recognizing a grant award of six thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars. But I just want to note the total overall amount of funding that we're receiving, one hundred seventy-seven thousand eight hundred eighty-three from the Durham County, the Durham Library Foundation's board. And this is one of fourteen grants that they have issued to Durham County libraries to help us run our programming and services. So I want to shout out and thank the Library Foundation Board of Directors for this contribution and for the work they do in raising these funds to be able to issue these grants. I will now entertain a motion, if there's nothing to be pulled, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent events.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Burton, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Set for this group. Now we'll move to other business. This is an item that I, I don't know, I'll have to repeat myself, but we have the approval of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six contract with Downtown Durham Bank for Economic Development Services in the amount of two hundred thousand.
I would move to sign up for approval.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Jacobs, seconded by Commissioner Burton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, I abstain. So it passes four zero one. Four with one of the two. And now I'll pass it to Attorney Williams for our boards and commissioners.
Can you hear me? Yeah, all right. We have a number of appointments tonight. The first one we have is the Alcoholics Beverage Control ABC Board. We have two vacant positions, and the board has appointed Daniel Edwards and Frichelle Scott to that board. To the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, we have one vacant position, and the board has selected Andrew Birch for that position. For the Durham and Wake Counties Research and Production Service District Advisory Committee, we have nine vacant positions. The board has appointed Alex Murray, Gina Anderson, Gray Lucrecki, Sarah Ellis, Leon Kislowski, Sarah Gaskill, Michael Mike Currie, Frederico Egli, and Kara Rosen. For the Durham Convention Center Authority, we have one vacant position. The board has appointed Sean Holland. For the Durham County Hospital Corporation Board of Trustees, the board has appointed Hector Hidalco. For the Durham Sports Commission, the board has appointed, we have one vacant position. The board has appointed Emily Jo Roberts. For the Durham Technical Community College Board of Trustees, we have one vacant position. And the board has selected Tashandre Shun Edmonds. For the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one vacant position. And the board has selected Linda LaF or L.A. Hudler. For the Library Board of Trustees, we have four vacant positions. The board has appointed Anne McLean, Kanita Strang your standback, Leah Josephson, and Erica Patillo. For the Memorial Stadium Authority, we have one vacant position. The board has appointed Robert Bob Weiserman. For the Opioid Settlement Advisory Committee, we have ten vacant positions. One local government official, one healthcare provider, one social services provider, one law enforcement representative, one education and employment service representative, one individual with lived experience with opioid use disorder, one healthcare payer or funder, one employer and business leader representative, one community-based organization rep, and one individual who's a representative of a diverse community. And for the local government official position, the board has appointed Wendy Jacobs. For the healthcare provider, the board has appointed Jamie Carter. For the social services provider position, the board has appointed Captain K. Stanford. For the law enforcement representative position, the board has appointed Don Baxter. For the education and employment service representative position, the board has appointed Paul Nagy. For the individual with lived experience with opioid use disorder, the board has appointed Lofton Wilson. For the healthcare payer or funder position, the board has appointed Bernie Price. For the employer and business leader representative position, the board has appointed Karen Kelly. For the community-based organization rep, the board has appointed Shalisa Howard Martinez. And for the individual who's representative of a diverse community, the board has appointed Alonzo Papillon for that position. Congratulations to all of the appointees.
Thank you. Thank you, Jenny Wilson. I want to thank everyone who applied for board information. I think this packet and these applicants have been the most applicants we've received in my time as a commissioner. So I appreciate everyone who has been looking at our website and seeing all the ways we can serve our community. Thank you to everyone who has applied. To folks who didn't get selected this time, please apply for next time. We have lots more boards and permissions than we would love for your service and your voice. Congratulations once again to all the individuals who are selected. That concludes our meeting, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Commissioner Valentine moves to extend the meeting.
I second Mr. Valentine.
Moves to adjourn, seconded by Commissioner Burton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all so much.